We will call this meeting of the Oceanside City Council to order and start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with due diligence and justice for all.
Mr. Mullen.
Go ahead and give the closed session report. The city council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss item one on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator on the status of negotiations. That was with the Oceanside Police Officers Association. Council met on item two, conference with real property negotiator involving the El Corazon property. The negotiating parties are City of Oceanside and Sudbury Development and SoCal LP, negotiator for the city Douglas Edo. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the real property. Finally, the council met on item three, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. There were two matters discussed. The first is the City of Carlsbad and the Carlsbad Municipal Water District versus the California State Water Resources Control Board. The second case is Oceanside Neighborhood Alliance versus the City of Oceanside. There is no action under the Brown Act under one, two, or three to report tonight.
Thank you. Can we go to consent calendar, please?
None of the items are being polled, so items five through eleven.
Councilmember Feller.
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Go to item twelve, please. Mr. Mullen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at your last council meeting, we went over the procedures to fill the vacancy in the city council, either to call a special election or to appoint a person to fill the remaining term of the at-large position. Of course, that has to be done within sixty days of the vacancy, which was December 12th, so you have until your February 6th regular city council meeting to make that decision. Your direction at that time was for members of the public who were interested in the position to contact the city council and council members could individually interview those individuals if they saw fit. So we're here tonight to hear from the public and to take your direction if you're ready to make that decision.
Thank you. At this time, are there public speakers?
Yes, two.
So, following the public speakers, about a week ago, I had asked the council members to be prepared to submit their list of their top five candidates to the city clerk, which we will do after the public input. Then we'll take a short recess while the city clerk tabulates those, and then we can have further discussion and deliberation and potential decisions. So with that, if you want to call the public, please.
Sure, the first speaker is Jimmy Naught, and the second speaker is Sheila Codex.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Naught, 127 Sherry Lane. As you know, I communicated to you via email and offered my services. However, I made sure that to tell you that there was a conflict between any of the candidates, then you should consider me. Because one thing that is sure is that there has been a lot of rumors about already pre-selection, as has been said in the media. And also, I have heard the same rumors even when before I even wrote you the email, that there was a pro-business candidate and also there was a pro-council candidate for one political party leaning. I don't know if that is true or not, but I wanted to make sure that you knew what was being said in the community. The next thing is, is as I said into my last time I spoke before you, is that the person selected should only agree to serve the two years. It should not be a stepping stone. In my statement to you, I followed my word. I put under penalty of perjury to you that I would serve for only those two years. And I would take and remove my name from it, and I would take and go back to my position of power as a citizen and chair into this room. Because you have the responsibility of a public servant. The public has the power. They loan it to you. And that is what you need to keep in mind. So I wanted to make sure that you had what I had in back of mind, and I challenge each and every candidate that comes before you to do the same. Not use it as a stepping stone, not try to take and use it as a foundation to move ahead or for other office, to say they'll serve the two years and return back as a citizen to the position that they come from. I appreciate all your service that you render to the community. I know what you go through. I've seen it over the past two and a half decades. Except for Peter, I know you served a lot longer. So I know that I can say that with a real open heart. Thank you.
Sheila Cade at 1092 Greenway Road. I agree with him, you work for us, and we elect you, and you're supposed to do what we want. And I think this appointment for the city council should be done so that we get a voice. And how I suggest you do it is that everybody that wants to be on the city council, you should, you can make a different date, you don't have to have it on today's date, but make a date where everybody who wants to be on the city council come, have two minutes to speak, and all the people and let the people in Oceanside know that these people are going to be here, that they're going to have a time to speak, and that we can come. And at that time, then, when the people get done speaking, then ask, who do we want? And the people could come, and we could raise our hands, and we could vote it that way. I know it'd be too expensive to have a special election or anything, but we can be innovative, and I think that we should have a voice and be able to say, give our, you know, who we would want more than you guys. And that's what I, I think it should be done fair and just, and I don't think the way it's being done is fair and just for you guys to pick for the whole city of Oceanside, a city council person, especially since many of you would probably pick somebody who is pro-development, and a lot of us aren't pro-development. We want smart growth. So anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
So at this time, I would ask the council that we stand in recess for the next seven to eight minutes or so, and if you could put your list together to give to the city clerk, then she can then report all that out, and we can discuss and debate and see if we can come to any kind of decision. Thank you. We'll be in recess until 5:20. Come back to order and... City clerk?
Councilmember Sanchez, can you let me know?
Yes, thank you. And please excuse my voice, still getting over that cough thing. I want to say that I know there was a motion at the last council meeting that basically said to, that each council member will, on their own, interview people, the candidates, and that we would not do this at a workshop, we would not, you know, do this all together as a council, but that we would meet a deadline in terms of, you know, names being presented to us, and then interview everyone. And I did that. I did vote against that motion because I thought we ought to have had a workshop and have the public as part of that process as well. So apparently, a memo came out after the council meeting, which somehow I missed, that's mea culpa, from the mayor, who basically says, and he's telling me three people agreed to this, that we would each, at this council meeting, we would be each submitting five people as, five names, as he did at the beginning of this item. And I would have preferred to have talked about the process, since there's nothing in the backup, there's nothing to describe it on the agenda. And so I'm just saying I would not have preferred that. It seems to be more secretive and less, you know, a ongoing process. And I would, really would have liked a better process in doing this. So in coming up with these names, I did come up with some questions when I interviewed people because I wanted to be fair. And these are the questions that I asked, just to let you know, in a spirit of being as public as possible. Why do you want to serve as a council member? How long have you lived in Oceanside? Have you volunteered for the city of Oceanside or a community-based organization? If so, what? And for how long? Do you have a background in city planning, environmental issues, economic development, finance, and/or engineering? What is your educational and work experience slash background? Are there any specific projects or programs that you are interested in that basically is inspiring you to apply? Are you related to anyone who works for the city of Oceanside? If so, describe that relationship. And then finally, are there any conflicts of interest that could prevent you from serving as a council member? I was able to meet with, you know, a large chunk of folks this past Monday and Tuesday, and I want, would like to state for the record who they were. Mary Lou De La Rosa, Amber Newman, Nicole Dominguez, Kevin Byrne, Jane Marshall, Ward Adorty, Jim Berlou, Stacy Thompson, Alex Pennelli, Carl Greina, Kevin Widewich, Pam Bliss, Cindy Rocco, Ryan Keim, Michelle Gomez, and Drew Andrioff. I, there were some pre-planned vacation, vacations for other people, so we were not able, I was not able to meet with them this past Monday and Tuesday. I, obviously, of all the people, you know, there are a lot of really great folks in that bunch, and so I'd like to, after the ones that have been writ, that have been submitted, I'd like to orally add to that list. Thank you.
All of them have been submitted, so we can let me know what your choices are.
I thought you were going to read them off.
I will post them on the PowerPoint.
Pardon?
I will enter into my spreadsheet and post it on the PowerPoint.
Oh, I see. Okay, my, and this was a really, really tough decision, understanding the parameters and the decision-makers, of course. So these are my, these are the, and I'm submitting four. Jane Marshall, Mary Lou De La Rosa, Nicole Dominguez, and Ryan Keim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So based on the spreadsheet that's in front of us, it appears that Ryan Keim is on all four of our lists. Jerry Kern and Philip Schwartz is on three. So at this point, I will turn it back to the council to see if you have any other issues you want to discuss, debate, or is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I would first like to, and thank you, Christopher, for agreeing with Jane Marshall. I would first like to urge you to consider Jane. She has been in the community and worked in the community for many years. She is Chair of OCNA. She really has gone out there more than a few, you know, more than several of us, and she's really made the time. She is pretty much, and what I was looking for is with someone that would be somewhere in the middle, that would not create problems for us either to the right, to the left, whatever. I doubt that we would have gotten anybody on the left, so, but anyway. But that's what I was hoping for, someone that would be solidly with the community, someone that could really have a lot of discourse here on the council and not, not create problems and instead be someone who could come and be a problem solver. So I would first like to make a motion for Jane Marshall, and then I added a second motion. Is there a second for Jane Marshall?
There does not appear to be a second.
Okay. Well, then, my second motion will be for Ryan Keim. He has...
My thing's not even on.
He has been a police officer with the city of Oceanside. He was actually with...
Does that mean to be cleared?
With Dan Bennett during that time period. It really impacted him. He was one of our better community police officers. He has served as the public, public information officer. He's also been doing that, serving in that capacity, media, with the Sheriff's Department. He basically grew up here. He has a family here in Oceanside, and he appears to have all four of us, so I would be making the motion for Ryan Keim.
Okay, my screen's not working, so if someone has their button on, I can't see it.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay.
Is there any discussion by any of the other council members?
I would, I would like to... I went through twenty-one interviews, one hour each, to find out who our city, which ones know our city and are part of the makeup of the city. Of those people, Ryan, he knows the city as a police officer, former police officer. He'll probably always be a police officer. But the, the issue for me was to make sure that somebody's committed to the future and the development that this city needs to keep going forward. The people that I put up, all were committed to that. The, the reason we're in this situation is that it is, and I've asked if we could somehow change this, but it doesn't look like you can. I would love to have had you all able to vote on this, this decision, as opposed to us appointing it, but people who get higher office ambitions or different office ambitions, they're the ones that caused this unless they go out ill, and it really makes it difficult for those that are, so it's not, not fair to complain about this problem for, as far as I'm concerned. I worked hard to understand every, everybody that came through the door. You know, some of them I haven't agreed with ever, but I think that we did a very fair process here, trying to understand what each person was about and the issues going forward. I'll support Ryan. You know, I, I think that we would be well-served to have him in here. He's got to understand, and I believe he does, that the development of this city is so important for the future, whether it's the revenue derived from the development, but if you're not moving forward, you're dying. So that's, those are my words.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate the fact that this was not an easy decision. We have a lot of great candidates that applied, that I sat in front of and got to know in an intimate setting, you know, get to know them a little bit, a little about their history, their family, you know, their understanding of the city, how they've been involved with the city, and really just get to know a lot of great applicants. So this decision wasn't easy. If the situation was different, I would prefer a special election, but spending $750,000 of your money for somebody who's only going to be in office for less than a year is something that I, Phil, I don't want to swallow, and I'm sure most of you would agree with that. For disclosure purposes, outside of reviewing Mr. Keim's resume and, you know, brief interactions, I was unable, due to scheduling, able to set up a actual face-to-face meeting with him. But across the board, he checked out with what I was looking for. That's why I was able to list him as one of my five choices. And so with that being said, I will also look at supporting Mr. Keim.
Thank you. And I will also say that I met with twenty-three and had a phone interview with a, one person, a twenty-fourth, and I'm impressed with a lot of you. And I would tell you this, those of you who expressed an interest in this, there are other positions within the city, particularly in our commissions and committees, that certainly could use your attitude, approach, and service. So don't, please don't take this as the wrong way. Stay involved, and hopefully we'll see you again. So with that, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
You can. Okay.
Favor, say aye. Right hand, aye.
Okay. Motion approved, four-oh.
Item thirteen, please.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, this item is in front of you to discuss city clerk vacancy created by the resignation of former city clerk Zach Beck. Staff recommends that the city council declare the city clerk position vacant effective December 31, 2018, and discuss the options to fill the vacant city clerk position to either one appoint a successor to fill the vacancy at this meeting, or accept applications to fill the vacancy by the February 27, 2019 regular council meeting. And official applications would be posted on the city's website. Call for a special election on November 5, 2019, and/or provide direction to staff. If council chooses to proceed with an appointment, we propose the following schedule to ensure sufficient time for the process. At tonight's meeting, council would declare a vacancy effective December 31, 2018, and provide direction. On January 23rd, the deadline would be to file applications with the city clerk's office. On, during the period, January 24 through February 6, the council would review the applications and to have a potential interviews. On the February 6, 2019, we would have another meeting to have a potential appointment, and or February 27, that deadline would be as the last regular meeting to appoint someone. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Was there any public? We have a motion to move staff recommendation. Is there a second? I'll second that.
Wait, I want a discussion. It's already turned into the vote? Okay.
Then Councilmember Sanchez?
The motion is, staff's recommendation is to declare the, the position vacant, which of course it happens as a matter of law, and, but it doesn't really talk, the motion does not really talk about how to do this, and I would like to add that we do what we have done with planning commissioners, and that is ask people to submit applications, to have some kind of a deadline for submitting the applications, and that they, that it include a resume if that's, if they have one, to include the basic questions that are included in the planning commission process. So I would like to, in fact...
election, we put a deadline of Wednesday, January 23 as the deadline to file the application with the city clerk's office. That application has already been developed, and as the city manager and the city clerk are ready for that to go live once you give direction. The suggestion was that you could look at these applications between the 24th and the 6th. If you wanted to conduct a interviews in public, that could be done on the 6th, and then either appoint on the 6th, or then continue the matter to the 27th to appoint. So that's all part of, I think, the staff recommendation.
The 6th would be a regular council meeting day, though, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of a workshop?
6th, I believe, is a regular council meeting.
Right. So we could have a workshop on the 20th, so I'm asking us to have a workshop on the
Yeah, so, or you could give us a date prior to the 27th.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to have a workshop and, you know, have 20th.
So that would be a workshop on February 20th for the purpose of interviewing the
the 20th of February?
potential candidate list?
Yes, and possibly coming up with a decision on that day.
And we can't have this on the 6th. Applications have to be in 14 days prior to that.
So are you looking to have a workshop on the 6th in the afternoon, earlier than?
A council item.
He wants to do it during a council meeting. I'd like to amend the motion. I know that there is already a motion on the floor that is to staff's recommendation, which is, staff's recommendation is to declare the vacancy and then discuss the options, appoint a successor by February 27th, or call for a special election. That's the motion on the floor. That was, you know, the motion was move staff's recommendation, and that's the recommendation. It doesn't say anything about the process, so I'd like to add, amend the motion to add that we have a workshop on the 20th, February 20th, to interview the candidates.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, I don't have the draft February 6 agenda in front of me, but my recollection is quite full.
Your motion at this point is to do a workshop in the afternoon of the 20th?
Yes.
Where applicants would actually come in and present themselves?
Right.
I'm okay. Is, I mean, that's fine with me if there's anyone else that was willing to support that. So I will second that as a substitute motion.
So we have a proposed deadline of the 23rd for applications. Is that acceptable? Okay. So deadline of the 23rd, then interviews on the 20th of February at a workshop, if I'm understanding correctly?
Yes.
So that's been seconded.
Please vote.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Item 17 is a request by the deputy mayor and myself to look at and potentially provide direction to staff to eliminate the cap of the 43 dwelling unit per acre density requirement for our higher-density areas. What I'm looking at is that no development regulations would be changed, so any development would still meet the height requirements, the setback requirements, the parking requirements as they are today. What we would eliminate is the issue of whether it's 43 or 57 or some other number of units per acre. And the example that I would use is if you look at the two projects that GF has recently completed, the Pier Side North and Pier Side South, those projects were approved in connection with five blocks where the overall density will be at or below 43 units per acre. But the Pier Side North project, if you look at that project standalone, has a density of about 56 units per acre, and the Pier Side South project has a density of 96 units per acre. So the project looks good. It parks itself, it meets all the city's standard requirements, other than the density. And so in looking at some of our potential development options within those higher-density areas, I'm looking to get council support to give staff direction to eliminate that 43 unit per acre cap. And with that, is there a public? Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. So basically, this would basically allow for much higher densities, or higher densities other than 43 dwelling units per acre. And is this for a certain area, like west of I-5? I'm just trying to think of why we would be having such high densities.
It would be allowed within those zoning districts that currently allow high-density development. So that would be within the downtown area and the other areas that are RT zoning. I don't have a map of all of those, but they currently would allow high-density development and mixed-use development. It's just that it would allow the number to change, not necessarily, it would go to a more form-based design. So as long as the building met all the design requirements, the actual number of units per acre would not be relevant.
You know, I have a lot of concerns about that, especially when we're talking about some of the, some of the units, for example, downtown. I've heard a lot of complaints about how small they are already, and how very, you know, limiting they are, especially people that have disabilities. I heard from them that they had a really difficult time trying to get in and out of these, you know, these units. And I think that we should do this on a case-by-case basis to just, you know, everywhere, not have any top number of, in terms of maximums, would definitely impact the character of a community. And, you know, where it, all of a sudden, we're having, you know, I don't know, 43, I don't know, what are we talking about, 50, 60, 75? I mean, I think that we should have more of discussion on this and have maps put out there to, you know, say, well, you know, this is a possible way of doing this. I wouldn't want to see this on Coast Highway. I know that staff is trying to fit 5,000 new units on Coast Highway, pure residential on Coast Highway, which I think would be a big mistake, and this would especially kind of encourage that when we're trying to get people through there and not cause more traffic. So I don't think this is, it's fair to have, to have, to vote on this without more information, and how this would affect our character, impacts to the community, traffic, which I know everyone is worried about. So I think this is a bit premature in the way it's put together here. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller?
Thanks. I think this is perfectly adequate. We've already got the two that are adjacent to Mission over that 43, and they look terrific. This is an opportunity to do a little more with probably a lot less. The regulations stay the same, I'm assuming what I've heard from staff. So the height, the only thing that changes is the density, and that's up to the developer to, or the project to meet all the other standards, whether it's parking or access. I haven't heard anything but people complaining about the train noise around our development. So I guess everybody who complains about anything must go to Esther, and everybody who likes everything comes my way. So I support this.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I took a look at this. I'm all for consolidation and making things smarter and to allow for more opportunity. And so I definitely am on board with supporting this agenda item.
So then I would make a motion that we provide that direction to staff.
I second.
Motion approved, 3-1. Councilmember Sanchez voting no.
Can we go to, okay, I've been requested to take a five-minute break. We'll be back in five minutes for the public hearing item.
And also 120-square-foot second-story balcony addition to the west-facing elevation of the existing Yacht Club building located at 1950 North Harbor Drive. Here's an image of the site. It's located at pretty much the western, northwestern boundaries of the coastal area of the city's harbor. This project did go to the Harbor Beach Advisory Committee, where it was unanimously recommended approval to this body at a 5-0 vote. Here's an image of the subject building, where they wish to extend the western balcony out and build a ADA elevator lift, so people with disabilities can access the second floor. Here's an image of the site plan proposal. Like I said, the existing balcony would be stretched out to the west and further toward the south to accommodate this exterior elevator. So with that, staff recommends that the Harbor Advisory Board approve the regular coast permit to allow the construction of this elevator lift and the 120-square-foot balcony addition located at the Harbor Yacht Club at 1950 North Harbor Drive. This concludes our presentation. If it happens, any questions?
This is a public hearing? If there's anyone from the public that would like to address this item?
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. As being the senior citizen of the year, I would be remiss with not taking and not mentioning that this elevator would also serve our seniors and make their lives a little bit more convenient, because the majority of seniors will take and have some form of disability in their long lifetime. So if you can approve it, it would be very advantageous for their lives in the future. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I want to say some really great things about our Yacht Club. They have a lot of activities for the community. I love your Fourth of July dinghy contest. It's wonderful. And also the wonderful fundraising that you do for nonprofit organizations. There's a lot of classes that you teach. Our harbor is a wonderful place, and I'm happy to move adoption. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller?
I would like to hear from the commanding general Commodore headboat guy from the Yacht Club before I make a...
The guy that's standing right there.
Thank you for welcoming me. Well, first, I'd like to say, on a personal note, I would not want to miss the opportunity to say thank you to the council and the distinguished Mayor Weiss. My wife and three kids and I think that you've set a great course for this city, and we really enjoy waking up here every day, so thank you. And on behalf of the Oceanside Yacht Club, we're really excited about being able to provide access to those that otherwise couldn't gain access to our second-floor facility. And we've been able to do that because of the generosity and the foresight of our members. And I would like to recognize one super hero here tonight. You may know him. He's a son of Oceanside. He's our senior staff Commodore Byron Jessup. He was there when they built the building, and he's still there to this day.
We hope you all come down and visit us. Thank you very much. Thank you. So I haven't heard very well since Byron blew off his cannon in my ear about the first year I was on the council, but I think that you only have one other thing to do, and that is, the urinal in the men's room is a little high for people to reach, so, anyway. I second that.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you.
I had the privilege of actually going to do a site visit yesterday. No one was in the Yacht Club when we went through, but we did a tour, and I saw the location of where the elevator's going to be, and, you know, I thought to myself, you know, why hasn't this been here sooner? Because you guys do great things for our city, for our community, to get families and youth down there to embrace the ocean and all the activities we can do here in Oceanside. So I fully support this, and I'm excited to see it, you know, come to fruition for our city, so.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Do we have items on non-agenda public?
The first speaker is Clarissa Jacobson and Jimmy Knott.
Hello, my name is Clarissa Jacobo, and I am a sophomore at High Tech High North County. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I believe that the environment is our most precious resource. The protection of our one and only planet is so vital, it's up to every person to step up and do their part. In my community, I've led beach cleanups and started a club called Zero Plastic at my school, but we can't simply rely on beach cleanups to reduce our plastic waste. We must do more. The situation at hand, the plastic waste polluting our planet, has gotten so incredibly out of hand that is not, it is not just among us, but inside of us. This may sound shocking, but I pose this question to you. Have you eaten plastic in the last 72 hours? Your resounding answer may be no, but that probably isn't the case. You see, Tupperware containers and takeout containers used as fast food, used at fast food eateries contain something called endocrine disruptors. They're primarily made of polystyrene, also known as Styrofoam, or other types of plastics that contain BPA or phthalates. When heated at high temperatures, they can release dioxins. Anytime you heat a Tupperware container or place a hot dish into one, dioxins can seep into your food and intrude upon your health. A multitude of health hazards can be attributed to endocrine disruptors, and they can even lead to cancer. Eateries that serve these types of products, their products in plastic containers, put health at risk, an unnecessary risk. And why? Often because they are unaware of the consequences or refuse to spend the The protection of our one and only planet is so vital, it's up to every person to step up and do their part. In my community, I've led beach cleanups and started a club called Zero Plastic at my school, but we can't simply rely on beach cleanups to reduce our plastic waste. We must do more. The situation at hand, the plastic waste polluting our planet, has gotten so incredibly out of hand that it is not just among us, but inside of us. This may sound shocking, but I pose this question to you. Have you eaten plastic in the last seventy-two hours? Your resounding answer may be no, but that probably isn't the case. You see, Tupperware containers and takeout containers used as fast food, used at fast food eateries contain something called endocrine disruptors. They're primarily made of polystyrene, also known as styrofoam, or other types of plastics that contain BPA or phthalates. When heated at high temperatures, they can release dioxins. Anytime you heat a Tupperware container or place a hot dish into one, dioxins can seep into your food and intrude upon your health. A multitude of health hazards can be attributed to endocrine disruptors, and they can even lead to cancer. Eateries that serve these types of products, their products in plastic containers, put health at risk, an unnecessary risk, and why? Often because they are unaware of the consequences or refuse to spend the few extra cents it takes to buy less harmful packaging. I don't know about you, but I believe that both realities must be stopped immediately. The city of San Diego has taken a stand on the issue of harmful food packaging by instituting a styrofoam ban. This prohibits styrofoam from being used and distributed within city limits because it is detrimental to the environment. This is a major step forward. We have far to go. Plastic is poisoning us and the earth we share, and as a community, we must do something about it. I recently attended an event celebrating the United Nations and their promise to be there as humanitarian aid. I didn't expect it to be so, but a large part of this event was to speak about our environment. There was a quote, and I will never forget it, because it was used to describe our earth and its inhabitants. Marshall McLuhan once said, "There are no passengers on Spaceship Earth. We are all crew." None of us have the luxury to expect someone else to save the planet and do the heavy lifting. It's everyone's job. Our spaceship is heated, crowded, and running out of fuel. We found ourselves in the middle of dire times. There's no other option than for us to work harmoniously to ensure a safe and stable future. Today here in Oceanside, that means banning the production and usage of styrofoam. This is a future I believe in, but I can't do this alone. Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, one-twenty-seven, Sherri Lane. I come to you today to basically report on a few things. First off, I wanted to express thanks to the friends of Park and Rec. For, as you know, with the closing and separation of the Oceanside Senior Citizens Association over at our Country Club Senior Center, it left us without a sponsor. They have courageously stepped forward and decided today to be our sponsor, and I wanted to publicly thank them. Also, with the, reporting back to you on serving seniors, which is now the new group taking over for providing meals to our seniors. There has been some minor hiccups, and also, there is a refurbishing and remodeling of our kitchen going on, but they are basically still feeding our seniors, following through with your directives. And I want to compliment you for taking the courageous steps that you did in giving that directive to staff, and staff has made sure to carry through with your directives. Now, for a couple other things. This coming Sunday, over at El Corazon Senior Center, there's going to be a Motown Lime Dance Party. There's going to be a ten-dollar cover charge, and this will be from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. So, you everybody twenty-one years of age and older is invited to attend, and wanted to make sure that everyone knows about that. And it's going to be some fun, and there's going to be refreshments and things just like that, and also, a lot of companionship. And to let everybody know, for the dance schedule, it's not just going to be ballroom dancing throughout the year. We're going to have a variety of dancing that's going to be taking place each and every month, and we want to make sure that everybody is invited to take and participate, getting out, dancing, having fun with your neighbors and friends. And you don't necessarily have to be a senior to participate. And finally, for those seniors and others that find themselves in need of food, there are dates, and this coming Monday will be the first date for the year for our senior food boxes. So if you know a senior that is in need of it over at the Country Club Senior Center, you can take and come on by from nine o'clock to eleven-thirty for a box of food that would take and provide you sustenance, and there's no charge for it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Holly Kay.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Holly, and I am a volunteer with a group called Trauma Intervention Program. It's also known as TIP. And for those of you who are not familiar with it, I, just to share a little bit about my personal experience, this was thirty-three years ago, and my infant daughter was in her first day of childcare, and I went to pick her up after a half-day of work, and she had died of sudden infant death. And the fire department came and whisked us off to Tri-City, and when I was there, there was a woman that was standing right next to me, and I didn't know what she looked like. I just knew she was this tall gal, and she was there for me. What can I do for you? Can I make a call? Can I give you some water? What can I do? Fast forward thirty-three years, and I'm involved with Trauma Intervention now, and it's, now it's a very large organization. So basically, what we do, the first responders call us out, so that when we come out to be the emotional and physical shoulder for someone who has experienced trauma, frees up those first responders to be able to go on and do their job, whether it be the police department, the fire department, sheriff's department, because as much as they want to be there to help people, they can't always be. So, we stay as long as we're needed there. That could be to make calls, to be an emotional shoulder, or answer the, what do I do now? Whether it's burial arrangements or whatever, we're there to help. We are just regular citizens helping regular citizens. In two thousand and eighteen, Oceanside had two-hundred-and-thirty-seven calls. Oceanside has, as far as North County, we far and away have the most trauma calls. Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven calls, we had one-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-six clients, and we had seventeen-hundred-and-eighty-eight first responders that called in for help. So, that's a little bit about what we do. We do have a new academy coming up. When I called on Trauma Intervention thirty-three years ago, it had just started, and there was no training involved. And now, it is an academy. It's a three-week program. We learn how to help people, and it's mostly not what you say, it's just being there. It's just being that shoulder that they, it's just somebody that's there. So, in closing, I'd like to thank you all for allowing TIP to be part of Oceanside, because we do a lot of good. So if there's anybody that's interested, just spread the word, and I have cards, or we are at www.ti... I'm sorry, www.tipsandiego.org. Thank you so very much.
The next speaker is John Botorf, followed by Victoria Phoenix, Lee Phillips, Suzanne Hume, and Georgiana.
My name is John Botorf, and I have lived in Oceanside for fifteen years. My address is five-seventeen Seagate Drive. I have a few things I want to talk about tonight, mostly about Clean Air. I want to talk about idling. Everywhere I go, I see people sitting in their car with their engine running, not a hot day, not a cold day, just sitting there on their phones, filling the air with exhaust. Car exhaust is deadly. It is carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide, VOCs, formaldehyde, benzene, hydrocarbons in particulate matter. Children are especially vulnerable to air pollution, and recent research shows children in strollers are particularly at risk as they are low to the ground. Studies show that about one-half of all idling occurs when parked, not in traffic, with the average person idling when not in traffic sixteen minutes every day. Car exhaust, particularly carbon dioxide, is a major contributor to climate change. Each year, idling in California alone emits more than three million tons of carbon dioxide and wastes more than three-hundred-million gallons of fuel, over one billion dollars wasted. So what can be done? Pass legislation to stop vehicle idling. It has already been done in several states and cities on the East Coast, and the U.S. Department of Energy has a program to help make it happen. I'll email all of your offices links to this information with examples of legislation. Beyond that, if you're going to be stopped for more than sixty seconds, except in traffic, turn the engine off. If every person in Oceanside stopped idling, we would save over eleven-million gallons of gas and cut over one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand tons of carbon dioxide in Oceanside every year. That would go a very long way to meet the state requirements to reduce greenhouse gases and make our city a much better place, a much healthier place. My wife and I created a website, cleanearthforkids.org, and we are more than happy to help our city make all this happen. I will include our contact information in the emails I will send, along with links to Stop Idling and other information. To help the health of Oceanside, the city needs to move forward with community choice energy and pass a strong climate action plan. Other cities like Encinitas have done both. Let's put Oceanside in that group of progressive and innovative places to live. Lastly, I want to voice my support for non-toxic Oceanside. People and pesticides don't mix. My wife's health was damaged by pesticides, and we are still dealing with its effects. Please stop using pesticides on Oceanside public lands. The Organization Beyond Pesticides provides training on organic land care for city staff and have model ordinances available. Let's join other cities like Carlsbad, Irvine, Laguna Woods, and San Juan Capistrano and move to a safe approach to landscaping and pest management for our city and our children. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with all of you to make our city a better place. Thank you.
All right.
Do I put that over here? Hello, my name is Phoenix. I am here to represent Clean Air for Kids. This is a picture of the way that carbon dioxide can harm animals and humans. This is carbon. It can cause harm to animals and humans. It vibrates and creates heat. Please don't use pesticides in parks. Also, don't idle. The car exhaust is deadly. Thank you. Please help sad animals by turning off your engine when parked. Thank you for listening. Clean air is important, and we need it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Victoria, and I love, I love a lot of people, and I care for the earth, and I hope this helps the world. So, when, so one day, me and my tutor, when me met, and they were, my dad and my tutor were talking, and there was a man, and usually every day he comes to this park, and there is a bit, and his car was on with the engine running, and a baby passed by with their mom, and sometimes that could lead to cancer for kids sometimes, and that could do, and that could be bad stuff floating in the earth, carbon dioxide, and that was really bad for all these kids in the world and all these people to breathe, and yeah, thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Lee, and I live in Oceanside. I'm going to tell you why we should limit our beach bonfires and eliminate park and city pollution. My brother is a survivor of the fire. He has burns all over his body, and I don't want it to happen to any of you here, but it could if we're not smart about this. Beach fires hurt people's lungs and are effective on children with asthma. Non-toxic Oceanside. No pesticides in our city and parks. We shouldn't have them. Just like Carlsbad and Irvine, we need signs to remind others not to idle, because we want to protect your lungs and ours. It is also the worst for babies, as their strollers are small and they inhale all of the carbon. Thank you.
Hi, I'm the lucky lady that gets to work with these wonderful children. I'm so grateful to be here today. My name is Suzanne Hume. I'm a teacher, I'm a reading specialist, coach, anyway, so I work with all kinds of kids and have a blast. So yes, I'm just going to go ahead and, I just would like to say thank you so much to you, and also, give a big round of applause to the kids for being here. It's so difficult to do.
Thank you.
I also would like to thank my, another student who didn't come up, but Gideon, for his bravery being here. I asked him if it would be too difficult for us to speak about beach fires, as he is a burn victim. And he's very brave, and he's joining us today. He is a survivor. So, I'm mentioning this because, as my husband mentioned, I was exposed to pesticides, and I guess I'll use the word survivor, too. I'm a pesticide survivor, and I can give details, if you'd like, later. Anyway, so previously in my life, I didn't really think about it. Gosh, people idled, I like, you know, in the window, I bent over, you know, I talked to them when their car was on. You know, I definitely, there was, I was able to be around fire and smoke, all of those sorts of things, and my life drastically changed last year. My helicopter spraying pesticides, I was on my patio, and so I couldn't speak, and a teacher, and it affected me because I had to move from my home. I lived on Courtney's Way, and we were not warned about the helicopters coming from West Coast tomatoes. And so I was sent to Scripps and then to UCSD, and when I left, because I couldn't speak and they put tubes down me and everything, my paper says pesticide exposure. So, I mean, we have top docs, top in the world, recognized, who understand this problem, and I was told I had to move. So I'm going to be honest with everyone here today. John and I, although he is in information security, and I'm a teacher, and we have enough money, we were homeless in Oceanside, because I had no place to go. We tried to go to the Marriott and different places, but they pump in the perfume. Because of my pesticide exposure, we slept in our van. We got a ticket by, actually, I had Officer Smith, who is a student, a parent of my student, come and say, "Hey." Yeah, quite embarrassing. Anyway, but I was like, you know what, it's okay, we've just got to figure it out. So we went to the, city owns it, the Oceanside Marina Inn, and they have harbor fires there, and I have an air detector here, and the fires, the smoke, it's so bad, because the fires are allowed to go on twenty-four hours. And so at four o'clock in the morning on December twenty-eighth, and we have pictures of various days, I'm so sorry, there were kids, and the fire was big and raging and dangerous, and all I could think about was my beautiful student Gideon, and his brave mom, and his family, and also, I couldn't breathe, so I fell to the ground. I'm not saying I'm a fabulous teacher, but I sure give my all, and I will do anything, I will work with committees, I will help. We have to talk about our air. I got involved with CCE, that's a great idea, and also, I'm urging you to give a strong climate action plan. I looked at the draft, can I say? It's not strong enough.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last two speakers are Craig Ross and Jill Rivero.
I'm a recent person who moved to Oceanside. My husband and I bought a home at four-thirty Creek Road, Oceanside, in the San Luis Rey Historic Area, and I wanted to say, first of all, thank you for giving us a voice to come up here and to actually talk about issues. I know that you're very busy. What we've noticed is in the back of our fence line, we have a drainage ditch, and recently with the California fires, it became really obvious to me that no one is, I think it's the city of Oceanside is maintaining the brush behind our house and behind the fence line, but the pepper tree is huge. It's getting watered every night. I'm not really sure if it's the city of Oceanside that's watering it. It's not us, and it's growing now over our fence and over our property. It's not us, and it's growing now over our fence and over our property. And my son, I worry about him, he's six years old, he's going to get evaluated for autism this month, in fact, and sometimes he wanders, and it is, it is a worry of mine that the branches of the pepper tree may fall on our fence line or our house, or worst-case scenario, there's a fire, and I wonder if our neighborhood is even prepared for the amount of damage that could happen if that pepper tree did catch on fire. There are two pepper trees, and they're, they're leaning over the fence lines of our neighbors as well, so I'm kind of here to represent them as well. So just wanted to say thank you again for giving us this voice. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Years to you.
Happy New Year.
I am Jill Rivero's agent with Turner Real Estate. I helped her find that first home. So I have a lovely family, and I, I'm looking to make sure their value and safety is in mind. So I have seen that Brazilian tree, and I love trees. I'm a big outdoor fan, except for, to me, eucalyptus, Brazilians, and ficas, they were beautiful when they were little, but as time goes, oh my gosh, they get huge, and I see the uplifting on their back concrete. That was something that I pointed out from the very beginning, but at, at the value they were able to get in the home, it was in their price range. So I'm just here to back up with the Riveros, that their, that tree, it's huge, and it really does need some kind of maintenance. And I'm there in case of other clients that have a situation to find out what our city's policy is in maintaining the trees like that that are getting huge. Eventually, me personally, trees like that should be grown on estate properties away from a home, so if they ever get a sickness, or Jill mentioned, a fire, they're not too close to properties. But back in the day, they were cute, growing in, and they're beautiful, but now they're, they're big, and it could be a problem. So I just wanted to be here with Jill and find out what the city might be able to do to, to help a situation out like that, and learn about our policies. Oceanside, I, I live here, I'm at 865 Muirfield Drive. I've got two brothers and all their families that went through our schools, so I love this town, and we keep getting better. You were here before Board where I helped the people at Coastal Market, and now we have the LTH instead of a 7-Eleven, no offense to the 7-Eleven, but that little restaurant over there seems to be doing very good. And our town has been a progressive town, and to see these kids and the others being concerned about air quality and pesticides, yay, that's the future. And same with on tree growth. What, what we, can we do to, to maintain them and then put smart trees in for the future that won't offer any, any homeowners' problems? I thank you again for the voice that we, you give to the citizens in our town. Thank you.
Is that all? Are there any general council member comments at this point? Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. So I attended the Parks and Rec Commission meeting last night. It's the first time I've, I've been honored to serve as a council liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission, and, you know, great topic here on pesticides. They are going to be addressing pesticides use of our park, in our parks, and so I'm really excited. I actually had started some discussions with some neighborhood folks, and so this is really going to tie in very, very well. The, the one pesticide that we were looking at in terms of the community folks was looking at Roundup, the use of Roundup, and so I think we're going to be able to really have a hard look at this, and I really look forward to, to that. On January 10th, which is tomorrow, at 10:00 a.m., it's kind of early, but 10:00 a.m., is, I believe it's the first of several public meetings on the beach resort that they've been threatening to have groundbreaking for the last few months, and so I believe it's going to happen either this month or maybe next month. And that public meeting is at the Oceanside Public Library Community Room, so if you have a chance to stop by, you know, I, I'm interested, too, in seeing the timelines. I know that some of the parents and some of the kids at Oceanside High, Oceanside High School, you know, are really concerned about the graduation, so this would be a good time to be asking about the timelines. The Women's March Rally, this is, the North County Group is having a rally on Saturday, January 19th. They'll be starting the rally here at the Civic Center and then walking over to the train station and meeting up with the Women's Rally down in San Diego. The rally here starts at 9:30 and comments at 10:00 o'clock, and they've asked me to do welcoming remarks on behalf of the community of Oceanside, and I look forward to doing that. We have a lot of really great, strong women leaders in Oceanside, and I'm, I'm happy to, to honor them all. There's, every day we have Warrior S's, every day, you're a good example, who do so much for our community and never really get any kind of recognition, so please join us in, in the rally and march. Also, on the, actually on the 21st, which is Monday, that's Dr. MLK Day, we will be having a prayer breakfast sponsored by the NAACP of North County, so at the Quantum Learning Center, so please join us, and we're going to have, they're going to be, there's going to be a special speaker, and it's always a wonderful program. And finally, I want to say, happy birthday to Leslie Davies. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Just briefly, I just want to say that I'm very proud to see the students come in such a intimidating environment and speak their minds in, in protecting the environment, and so thank you guys so much for coming and expressing yourselves, and the young lady from High Tech High, thank you for coming. We, we appreciate that, and I think we can, as a city, come together and look at more practical ways to be more environmentally friendly on the pesticides we use. I think it's just very practical, and it's something I would like to, to support as well. So thank you, guys.
And with that, we will stand adjourned until 3:30 on January 23rd.